Everybody, welcome to City Hall. We're getting ready to go.
Buenas noches, las personas que están esperando para iniciar la reunión del Consejo Municipal. Esto es porque todos nos pueden dar las diez de la mañana. Ahí tenemos presentes tres señores Crook, señor Rosita y señor Tadiña. Estamos yendo para un foro. Señor Carlos Garcetti, I, Labach, Parks Perry, Reyes, Fly, Spieza. Por favor, pasar a la sala.
It's fine, it's fine, I'm a bit tired, but it's fine. Wait, tell me later, I don't want to interrupt you. But, um, well, we're doing fine too, he's doing fine. He's like, "I'm telling you, but..." Much better. Me is much better. We can learn from each other, which is obvious, right? But it is much better. We had a big discussion the other day and I said, "Okay." And he, he, he was like, "Sorry, so we can work that or..." He said, "But I'm not going to..." Like, you know, he, he, he exploded for me, you know? Some days, he said, "I cannot..." That's a lot of pictures. Like, who doesn't, right? He's a really good person, in a lot, in a lot of ways. I can really rely and count on him. Um, because of his experience. You know, working pretty well. I said, "Okay, I'll change it then." Ten thirteen. No, okay, I put ten of them. Okay. Okay, okay. Okay. La clase. Okay, okay, what if you send emails? Or you didn't send emails? But I'll definitely call you and I don't want to do that, I want real good. What is it? Oh, Manny, I'm sorry, I didn't know, I... No. Well, because I, I saw someone, like, she wants... Oh, okay, okay, okay. Oh, I see, all right, that's when I get together for the chula, that's what I, I kind of wrote it down. I'm like, "Okay, but I don't want to..." That's why I wrote, "Hi, buenos dias." That's why I wrote down. Okay, lunch, that's great. Ah, okay, I have to know what his name is. It's probably, it is, he just hasn't mentioned it, but, because he doesn't tell me. You know, he doesn't tell me, he says, "He knows." Okay, my friend, I start.
Oh, no, okay, cuatro, cuatro días en mi casa. Sí, no, ese sí, pero... A ver, yo creo que... Yo creo que tenemos que... Pero, primero, tenemos que solicitar. Para, no, yo sé cuando. Yo me tiene que esperar, me tiene que esperar. Para informar.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers. And welcome to the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. For today, Wednesday, September fourteenth, two thousand five. The City Council meets Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday at ten AM. Meetings are open to public, and we do invite you to join us. Four members of the public are able to attend council meetings. We can be viewed live on our cable station, Channel thirty-five. We can also be viewed live via webcast on the city's homepage. Or heard via council phone. Uh, colleagues and members of the public, the time is now, just past ten twenty. And we have six members present to pour shy at a forum. But we have a very special presentation today. To be led by Councilmember Ed Reyes. So we're going to call the meeting to order and recognize Mr. Reyes for our special presentation.
Mucha gente quiere llamar señor Reyes, pero una presentación muy especial, señor Reyes.
I can't, ¿verdad?
Good morning, we will, los días. Today is a very special day. This city, this grand city that it is, is made up of countries from throughout the world. And this city has grown in such a way. Where many of the most talented people... Hardworking persons. Muches suavidad y trabajan muy duro. En todas las naciones se ha reunido en esta gran ciudad que se llama Los Ángeles. Well, we've had an incredible contribution to economy, to food, to food. Here in Los Angeles, from the region of Central and South America. And today, we are here to honor many of the elected officials, personalities. Consulates, who represent these great countries. It's known as the Central American, the Aspora. And we are here to honor the twentieth anniversary of this great occasion. Tomorrow, September fifteenth, marks the one hundred and eighty-first anniversary of Central American independence. This year marks the twentieth anniversary of the Aspora. Guatemalans, Salvadorans, Hondurans, Nicaraguans, Nicaraguan and Costa Ricans of the city of Los Angeles. Members of the Central American community comprise over one million residents. In the city of Los Angeles, spread across fifteen council districts. But primarily, in the West Lake, Pico Union area and the San Fernando Valley area. The past twenty-five years, the Central American community has instituted two independence parades. Watermelon week, the day of Salvadorans, Nicaraguans and Salvadoran festas, Agustinas, among other events. The last twenty-five years, the Central American community has also created the following community organizations. Rescate, Caresen, Oscar Romero Clinic, Sana. Salvadoranos, Salif, Casa Nicaragua, Casa Honduras, Alianza Honduras. Homies Unidos, Mesa Redonda Nacional Centroamericana, Guia, Azusal, Alianza Guatemalteca, among other organizations. Today, the political, cultural and economic, social presence of the Central Americans is part of the fabric of the city of Los Angeles. And the year twenty twenty-one, will mark the two-hundredth anniversary of the independence. And the year 2021, who marked the 200th anniversary of the independence of the Central American region. The future for Central Americans in the city of Los Angeles and in the United States in the next 15 years is filled with great promise, and Angelinos are better for it. Today, we are here to recognize and join the National Central American Round Table in commemorating the 25th anniversary of the Central American diaspora and the arrival of Guatemalans, Salvadorans, Hondurans, Nicaraguans, Costa Ricans to the city of Los Angeles. So I'd like to present the Central American Round Table. Representing the Central American Round Table is Francisco Rivera. To present this certificate to him and ask him to share a few words with us. Francisco, felicitaciones.
On behalf of the board of directors of the National Central American Round Table, and on behalf of all the honorees from the countries of Guatemala, El Salvador, Nicaragua, Honduras, Costa Rica, and Panama, we want to thank you, Councilmember Reyes, the city of Los Angeles, for helping us, for commemorating, and we want to thank you, Council President Alex Padilla, for your support in the office of Mayor Antonio Villarreal. Also, for making this beautiful day in the eve of the commemoration of the Independence Day. I just need to say, you know, that Central Americans, people of Central American descent in the United States, the number is about 6 million people, and this, the city of Los Angeles is the national capital for all Central Americans, having, you know, the highest number of Salvadorans, Salvadoranos, and Guatemaltecos. And also, we want to acknowledge, you know, and thank you, the presence of the council generals. And we continue with the program, but thank you to all the council members for this. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Francisco. I must recognize that Francisco was once part of my staff when we first came into office, and he's learned about the mechanics of the city and has now in a position to talk about the issues of inequities, issues of inequities in housing, in transportation, in school, in education, and is now becoming involved in a greater group of advocates at different levels to address inequities in a manner that can make the city even better. But today, I want to recognize each council general, and I have certificates for everyone that will be giving to them in another location within City Hall, but I wanted to recognize them with their name and their position, their title, and all the honored guests we have here today. Today, we have with us Hugo Herrera, General Counsel of Salvador. Gracias por venir. We have Vivian Panting, General Counsel of Honduras. Carlos Carión, General Counsel of Nicaragua. Bienvenidos. Milton Alvarez, General Counsel of Guatemala. Gracias por venir. I would like to invite him to address the council. President Alex Padilla, member of the board for Los Angeles City Council, is a deeply honor for the general consulate, for all council general of Central America to be in this morning, important moment for the Central American community. This recognizing for the city council is a special moment for this community. Thank you, President Padilla. Thank you, Ed Reyes. Thank you, Mayor Villarreal. Alcalde Villarreal. Council General Alvarez, we'd like to share a few words.
President Padilla, members of the City Hall, President Reyes, thank you very much for this moment. I feel very honored to be here, especially because we're celebrating the 25th anniversary. 25 years that we've been part of a group that have been supporting the economy of this city. And I wish that in 24, in the next 25 years, we'll be celebrating a 50th anniversary as a big group, as a united group. And doing a lot of things for this, for this city and for our country. Thank you very much. And I appreciate it. Muchas gracias. Sinceramente aprecio, aprecio su invitación. Gracias.
Okay, I believe that our other council generals are on the way, but I would like to read off the names of the people behind me. They are the ones who are continuously active in our communities. They've been tireless and dedicated activists of not only the Central American community, but all of Los Angeles. We have certificates, of course, and I will be presenting them later. Those who have joined us are, for Honduras, Cecila Rodriguez, Presidenta Alianza Honduras Unida de Los Angeles. Duña Ilvett, Periodista, Cadena Tele Mundo. Luencio Velázquez, Presidente Honduras Unida de Los Angeles. Bienvenidos. Por Guatemala, Eric Solares, Guatemala Unity Information Agency, César Paz, Alianza Guatemalteca de Los Angeles. Tomás F. Zúniga, California Empowerment Movement. For Nicaragua, Julio Carlosa, Casa Nicaragua. Fred Lugo, Productor Latino TV. Carlos Escócia, Periodista, Leader Comunitario. Tito Lagos, Cámara de Comercio de Nicaragua, California. Por El Salvador, Carlos Vaqueroano, Director Ejecutivo, Salif. Ángel Sanbrano, Caresen. Rafael Nadal, Junta Directiva, Mesa Redonda Nacional Centroamericana. Esgardo Quintanilla, Abogado de Inmigración, Leader Cívico. Rafael Escamilla, Artista. Dagoberto Reyes, Director de la Cultura de El Salvador. Isabel Cárdenas, Leader Comunitario Salvadoran. Teresa Tejeda, Director Ejecutivo de Azusal. Salvador Durán, Periodista, Cadena Tele Mundo. Norma Roque, Periodista, Cadena Univision. Bienvenidos, Norma. Inat Rubio, Presidente Comité Salvadoran. Francisco Piñera, Salvadoran American Business Association. Randy Jurado Itel, Vice Presidente Salvadoran American Political Action Committee. I must say, about 10 years ago, was an intern mine, so it's great to see him at this stage of the process. Salvador Gómez Goches, Salvadoran American National Association. Cecil Hernández, Empresario. Eduardo González, Director Ejecutivo, Clínica Oscar Romero. Juan Carlos Cristales, Salvadoran Community Activist, and former Executive Director of El Rescate. Oscar Hill, founding Member of Asinca. Victor Rimaldo, Viva Panamá Organization. Salvador Sanabria, El Rescate. Por Costa Rica, Eduardo Valverde, Membero Directivo de Cofeta. I'd like to ask Norma to come up and speak, and on behalf of the group, but I'm going to share with you colleagues. When you look at all of this representation, you need to put it in perspective, that these communities are living in environments where you have 40,000 people per square mile. When the city averages 6,000 to 7,000, and I keep saying that, because it's hard to comprehend the pressures of those dense environments, and the folks behind me have been playing an incredible role in lifting the quality of life despite these challenges that our communities are facing. With that, I'd like to present, Norma Roque, to speak on behalf of the group.
Thank you very much. Gracias. Thank you, Council. Muchas gracias. Reyes, Council General, muchas gracias. Salvadoranos, muchísimas gracias, por este apoyo, todos estos años. I am quite honored to talk before you this morning, President of the Council, Alex Padilla, and all the members of this beautiful city of Los Angeles. Me siento muy orgullosa, y es un gran honor. In January of 2006, va a ser exactamente 25 años que llegué a esta linda ciudad de Los Angeles con mi familia, por la guerra civil en mi país. Estoy seguro que comparto toda esta historia con muchos de los salvadoreños y otros Central Americanos en este, en el día de hoy. Como ellos, yo dejé muchos parientes, una casa, una vida, un país que yo amo profundamente, pero yo estoy segura que puedo hablar de parte de nosotros. Estuvimos muy orgullosos, muy contentos, y muy agradecidos que esta ciudad, la ciudad tan linda, la ciudad multicultural, abrió sus alas para hacernos sentir como en casa. Muy agradecido que esta linda gran ciudad abrió sus alas para sentirnos como si estuviéramos en nuestra casa. Ya pasamos 5 años también que queremos honrar el día de hoy a todos los Central Americanos, a personas de todas las partes, incluyendo Belice y Panamá, que llegaron aquí antes de nosotros hace 50 años, 70 años. Cuatro generaciones de Central Americanos se encuentran aquí, no solamente tomaron oportunidades de crecer económicamente, culturalmente, y socialmente en este país, pero también han dado mucho a lo grande que es hacer en Los Angeles, también estamos muy contentas, estamos muy contentos de poder estar aquí celebrando 25 años, pero vamos a celebrar 125 años con todos. Muchísimas gracias. And God bless Los Angeles. Gracias.
I'd like to ask Duña Elvill from Tele Mundo to also share a few words.
Thank you very much, Council, President Alex Padilla, Tony Cárdenas, and everybody else. It's an honor for me to be here, like Norma said, we're very proud of being Central Americanos, and the most important of all, to live in this beautiful city. Thank you very much, everybody, and I would like to introduce my coworker, Salvador Durán from Tele Mundo, to give us a few words.
Thank you, good morning. Muchas gracias, y buenos días. You know, it's also been 25 years for me, like many of us, that arrived here as teenagers and as a community, I want to thank you for this honor. We really feel that LA has now become our home, because when we arrived to the United States, you guys welcomed us. El Salvador was particularly going through a very difficult time during the 1980s, and a lot of us, a lot of us lost loved ones, and that was one of the reasons why we came here, because we were at war. And so we just want to thank you, I am very honored, and on behalf of the many Salvadorans that represent us as a community, thank you for the honor that you guys have given us this morning. Muchas gracias.
My name is Salvador Sanabria, Director of El Rescate, the first Central American community-based organization created in Los Angeles and in the United States in 1981, to serve the Central American community arriving in those days as one of the largest modern diasporas coming to the United States in the last 25 years. We are proud, and we accept, on behalf of our peoples, that still are struggling for civil and human rights and economic rights. We accept, on behalf of our families, that still are struggling here in the city of Los Angeles for economic development. I want to thank especially Councilmember Ed Reyes for this honor to our community in celebrating the 25th anniversary of the arrival of the Central American diaspora to the United States. Thank you.
This is a special celebration, please bear with us, council members, you know, it takes 25 years to celebrate, so please, thank you. No, I just wanted to say, you know, that the inspiration for this celebration is Mr. Dagobert Reyes, the Director of the Casa de la Cultura of El Salvador, that is a well-known sculpture, you know, his works are all Central America and in some museums here in the United States, and so he is the inspiration, and I just want to allow him, you know, to say a word, you know, Mr. Reyes, Ed Reyes.
Gracias, señores del Consejo. Gracias a un viejo amigo de hace 25 años aquí en Los Angeles, Ed Reyes. Este reconocimiento es también para miles de indios de mi país que murieron sacrificados construyendo una gran flota de barcos. This is also a homage, you know, to all the thousands of Indians, you know, that died building ships. Barcos que en 1542 desembarcarían en San Diego, en San Pedro, y recorrerían toda la costa de California. 500 indígenas fueron amarrados a los remos, solo sobrevivieron 35. Esos fueron los primeros salvadoreños que junto con Cabrillo exploraron y le dieron nombre a California en 1542. Así que a ellos les debemos, el haber estado en California hace más de 500 años, y a ustedes la opistalidad de estar nuevamente en California a partir de los años 70. Señores, muchas gracias.
If I may, Mr. Reyes, ask Mr. Rosendahl to say a few words.
I just rise to say buenas tardes and muchas gracias. My seatmate, Ed Reyes, you're a true leader of Los Angeles, and Los Angeles would not be what it is if it wasn't for the ethnic diversity that has made this city great, and I want to thank all Central Americans who are part of the fabric and the backbone of building this great city, and thank you for coming today and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosendahl. In closing, as you can see, we all learn a little every day about our richness, the history dating back to the 1500s, they'll just share with us, this knowledge that we need to share with our young people, our children. When you look at the plague we call gangs and addictions, because of the lack of schooling, lack of education, lack of housing, if they knew of their great history, perhaps they would have a different mindset and keep them from falling into those perils. But today, we have real examples, mentors, that many of our young people should look to, that could perhaps change the future of our cities, and that truly is our challenge as a council, is to continue working and looking at the balance of how we allocate resources, how we achieve that level of integrity, when we are raising these communities, for our children, for our history, and for the great pride that's being demonstrated today by our guests. Thank you so much for your patience. We'll be now going to the other section of City Hall here, distribute these certificates. Again, thank you for this great day.
I just want to thank the council, President Padilla, and all of you for the patience that you have had with us. We really appreciate, as Central Americans, as Nicaraguan, the opportunity and the recognition that you are giving to our community. Every day, we strive to do what is best for this city. This is a great city that has embraced all Central Americans, all Latin Americans.
This is a great city that has embraced all Central Americans, all Latin Americans, and the fact that you are recognizing this is really more of a thank you to you for embracing us the way you have. All of Los Angeles is our home now, and we respect it. We respect the United States. We love everybody, and we are anxious to continue to contribute with our culture and everything else that we can pass on to our children and to the community. Thank you very much. On behalf of the Nicaraguan and the Channel 27, which is the only Central American station in Los Angeles, we appreciate it. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and congratulations to all of you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you very much. Our First Order of Business, please.
The First Order of Business, please.
Ms. Labonge Rose and Ms. Gould, second.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Smith, Rose, and Mr. Parks, second.
Ms. President, on the regular agenda, items 1 through 6 are items noted for public hearing. There's a request from Councilmembers Zion to continue item number 6 for one week, and the due date on that would be September 21st.
Members, any objection to continuing item number 6? If there's none, item 6 is continued. And members of the public here to speak on item 6, please know we will not be taking this item up today. That leaves before us, call each items 1 through 5. I do have cards on items number 2 and 3. We'll call those specials to hear from members of the public. Items 1, 4, and 5, I do not have requests from members of the public to just the council. These public hearings are open and closed. Request to call any of these items special, 1, 4, or 5. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on these items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Those are approved. Item 6 has been continued. Next item, please.
Item 7 is also a public hearing item, and on that item, the applicant consents to continue until October 26.
Members, any objection to continuing item number 7? Seeing none, item number 7 is continued. And members of the public here to speak on item 7, please know we're not going to be taking this item up today. Next item, please.
Item number 8 is also a public hearing item, and that item, the Planning, Land Use Management Committee report has been submitted, and there is an ordinance before council.
Okay, members, item number 8 now before us. I do not have, yes, I do have a speaker card, so we'll call this item special. Next item.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 9 through 31. And I believe there is a request from Mr. Reyes to continue item number 31 for two weeks, and the due date would be, excuse me, September 28.
Members, any objection to continuing item 31? Seeing none. Item 31 is continued, leaving items 9 through 30 before us. Let's hold item 9 and 10 on the desk, or call these specials. These are confirmation of one general manager, one commissioner. Item 11 through 30 now before us. Just a reminder, these items have had public hearings in committee. Motion would be required to reopen the public hearings. Request for special, Ms. Parks.
Special on 22, and then it should have a technical amendment to 25. There's a typo that gave credit to the wrong resolution in the summary of the report. It should be a Rosenthal most resolution, and they've improperly stated Parks' pardonance. And so we need to correct that.
Okay, and so this is just a verbal amending motion? Okay, we'll consider item 25 as amended. Any other specials, colleagues, on 11 through 30? Any other specials? Seeing none. Let's open the roll on these items, including item 25 as amended. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Those are approved. Items 11, 12, and 13 are ordinances and carry over for a second reading. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 32 through 60. 10 votes are required for consideration, and number 32 is a confirmation of a commissioner.
So let's hold item 32 on the desk. We'll call that special. Items 33 through 60, colleagues, now before us. I do have speaker cards on items 54 and 59. We'll call those specials to hear from members of the public. On the balance of the items, I do not have requests from public speakers, so we shall open and close those public hearings. Any specials? Ms. Parks. 60 calls special by Ms. Parks. Any other specials? Items 33 through 60. Any other specials? If none, let's open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Those are approved. Next item, please.
On the continuation agenda, item number 61 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to just the council on item 61. Public hearing is open and closed. Members wishing to call item 61 special? Seeing none. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, do we should take a public comment at this time?
Let's actually go to items 9, 10, and 32. These are general manager and commissioner appointments.
Item number 9 is confirmation of general manager of Board, excuse me, of the Fire and Police Pensions Department. And there is a new committee report that has been submitted that corrects the agenda and states that it's a selection of confirmation of the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
Okay, colleagues, let's welcome Mr. Perez to the table. Mr. Parks on this item?
Sir Perez.
Fourth with on 17. We have a committee report recommending confirmation of Mr. Perez. Members of the council wishing to speak, beginning with Ms. Labonge.
Thank you. Congratulations. How long have you been with the city now?
1980.
1980. So it's your 25th year. Congratulations. It's a wonderful climb, because I remember when, you were in the planning department?
I started out in Employee Relations Division.
Talk into the microphone only because they can't hear you.
Sorry. I started off in Employee Relations Division of the CAO's office in 1980. From there, I went to the Police Department in 1984, worked for Chief Gates in Inspection and Control, also in the Budget Section with NLPD. And 1990 started with a pension system. I was a senior management analyst there, became a 2, and became Assistant General Manager soon after that. It's a great honor to be here. It's a tremendous climb and a far cry from being a grammar school student over at St. Michael's on Manchester.
Right. Did you go to St. Bernard's High School?
I went to Loyola High School.
Loyola, ah, Loyola, I recommend his approval on that. Just give us one thing. There's a lot of talk about pensions and the cost of pensions. What do you foresee in the future? Will we have money to pay for the pensions that we've developed for our employees in the Police and Fire sections?
For Fire and Police, we're very fortunate. We're one of the few pension systems in California. It's over 100% funded. At the last valuation, we were 103% funded. I think a lot of that has to do with the contributions that the city has consistently made to the fund, the returns from the fund, and then the negotiations. In contract negotiations, my experience has been that the city's had a lot of good information about the cost of benefits. So when benefits are proposed to the city council, it's very well understood what the cost to the city's going to be and what the cost to the fund's going to be. I think as long as we continue that, we'll be in great shape.
And what's your red flag? As you're 103% funded, what's a red flag in other pensions? When do they really get worried? When it drops below 100 or when it drops below 90 or?
I think everyone's always worried about it because of the enormous amount of money that has to be contributed to pension system. The contributions required this year by the Fire and Police Pension System, even though we're 103% funded, is $167 million.
$167 million for the general fund?
Right. So there's always a concern about it, no matter what the percent of funding is. Unless we go so high, like 120%, where the contribution is about zero.
About zero. And how much is our total amount in our Police and Fire pensions?
We're at $12.9 billion.
$12.9 billion. All right. Thank you so much. Michael, congratulations to you and your family. It's wonderful to see you make that climb. I know I've been around this building a little bit longer than you, but just right as you, and you've done a wonderful job, and I'm pleased that the mayor selected you as general manager of this important department.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Cardenas.
How are you doing, Mr. Perez? Welcome. I look forward to you doing a great job over there with our pensions. Very important issue, but something that is usually under most people's radar. And one thing that's under people's radar is when you're talking about, what is it, over $12 billion in pension funds, and there's a lot of movement of that money. There's an entire economy in managing those pensions. And we're always looking for organizations that are good at what they do, that are effective in making sure they manage that money and make that money grow. Yet at the same time, do you have any preliminary assessments as to how they are doing when it comes to allowing a broader scale of participation in those opportunities from businesses, such as small businesses, local California businesses, et cetera?
The contracts that we let have requirements within them for consideration of issues like that. For instance, participation of women-owned businesses and minority-owned businesses. We're also in a situation where our board is currently looking at issues dealing with investments within the city itself. So that's an issue, though. It's got to be brought up. It's got to be, we have to exercise a lot of due diligence on that. There's a tremendous benefit to having something like that occur. But our first priority is making sure that it's a good deal for the pension fund.
Well, absolutely. It's something that obviously is wonderful to do, but at the same time, the care and the ultimate priority and responsibility remains on having qualified, good vendors, organizations that actually qualify first and foremost, that you know, at least on paper, they should be doing a very good job if you give them that opportunity. So we should never lose sight of that. But what I've been finding out, working on this issue across many levels, not only in the city and the state government as well, what we've seen is a lot of things put on paper that sound really good about giving equal opportunities and making sure that we follow the 209 guidelines here in California of hiring practices. And you can't give outright priorities to somebody because of their gender, or their race, or ethnicity, or religious persuasion. You can't do that. And I'm not advocating, nor would I ever advocate, that that would ever happen. But at the same time, what I've found is, you know, some of these documents are this thick about opportunities that they're going to open up to make it more available, yet at the same time, the activity and the outcomes are dismal. What can you promise me? What can you promise the legislative body here in the city that we can keep those standards high, yet actually open the doors and give better opportunities to a broader base of organizations and companies that are qualified, that should have access to that business?
I can guarantee you that we have our doors open to anybody that can give us a high rate of return within the asset class that we're looking for. I can also guarantee you that, you know, we're going to continue the past practice of having an open door like that. And to just, you know, let you know, in the fixed income arena, we have an organization, Ellen Capital, owned by Louis Byzel, who was hired 10 years ago by the pension system. Addix Capital is another minority-owned firm, as well as FIS, which is a fund-to-fund. So there is precedent for this. In fact, our pension fund was one of the first ones to hire an emerging manager, a bird of a lar from Amarindo many years ago. So I think we have a history of that, and I know that I have a board that has an interest in that as well. How about you? What's your personal commitment for that? I came from the inner city in Los Angeles. I truly believe in diversity. I grew up in a neighborhood that was really very mixed and want to have that here as well, not only with the staff, but to the extent that we have with our consultants as well. The ultimate decisions on who we pick lies with our board. There's very few that I have the ability to do. But direct answer your question, I've got an open mind, and I've got a commitment for diversity as well. But my first responsibility is to the fund.
Well, with all due respect, I appreciate those comments, but what I'd like to see is really that commitment play out in actions. And that commitment prevail on the department, on a legal standing that they can actually broaden the opportunities. Because with all due respect, I've met people in my life, it almost brings tears to my eyes when I meet the guy who was the first medical student at UCLA who happens to be Latino. And they're able to share that in my lifetime. It's sad that it had to come to the point where somebody in this lifetime, in this great country, could be talking about being the first Latino medical student at UCLA, yet at the same time, if that person isn't committed to making sure that they help that institution prevail and make sure that they don't have one guy saying that for 50 years, that eventually they have dozens and hundreds and thousands, and really they have a representation in that institution that does in fact reflect the population that they serve. So with all due respect, I appreciate your answers. What I'd like is a commitment from you, that you'll meet with me in the future, and then once you've been able to assess how things are going, you could tell me frankly, if you're satisfied, not only with your own commitment, but the commitment of the department to actually follow through on that agenda. Because the bottom line is, with 209, we have to respect the law, and we do respect the law. But the fact of the matter is, with or without 209, in some industries and some arenas, we've had a dismal, dismal participation with opportunities for small and local businesses and businesses with other aspects that I think are very important.
I'll commit to meeting with you, and I'll make great decisions to do that. Look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Councilmember Zion followed by Councilmember Rosenthal.
Thank you. I don't know if I should recuse myself from voting on this, being a member of that system. I know it's 103% funded. Councilmember Parks and I worked many years to enjoy that. And I think in the past, it wasn't well-funded. The city wasn't doing their share. There are four systems within that Police and Fire pension plan, as I understand it, currently. And I received a report recently, the senior members, retired members of the Police and Fire, a number of them in the 80s and 90-year range. I don't know if you saw that report that came out, where there's a number of those, I think there's 12,000 people in the system that are currently Police and Fire on pensions.
Yeah, there's about 12,000 retirees. And what would have to do with?
Like 3,000 that are between 80 and 90 years of age. It was incredibly high number. I'll share that with you. My concern is that it remain funded. I know that many retirees I've run into depend on that. That is their sole source of income. Unlike Social Security, police officers and firefighters oftentimes don't receive any other benefit, they don't receive Social Security. So that is their sole source of income. And many of them live throughout the country. In some areas, the cost of living isn't what it is in Los Angeles, and they strictly depend on that. If it wasn't for that, then they'd probably be on general relief because with the pension system that they get into, it doesn't afford any benefit from Social Security. I know that with the 90% that currently provided with 33 years of service, other cities, the city of California provides that, and they are in a deficit. We're not in that particular case. And I know that it has been well-managed the last few years. The commissioners seem to do a great job. And I know with your, listening to your expertise with the city of Los Angeles, you have a lot of expertise. As a Notre Dame graduate, I know that there's a rivalry between Notre Dame and Loyola. But putting that aside, I think you'll do a fine job there. And just remember those pensioners that depend on that every single month to keep them alive. And there's some I ran into at the opening of West Valley Station, they're in their high 90s in age, and they rely on that. And they retired on the old system, which really hasn't kept up with inflation, but that is their still source of income, still source of revenue. So congratulations. They could do well in that position.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Zion, Mr. Rosenthal.
You came before our committee. I was very pleased to hear all about your background and experience, and I was very happy to see the firefighters were endorsing you and believe in your leadership. I want to go back to what Mr. Labonge said. Give me some comfort that we can protect our pension system.
One of the things we want to avoid is being in a position like the city of San Diego, which has some severe problems right now. And there's a variety of ways to do that. One is to have some transparency in how the calculations of the city's contribution to the pension system are run. It's extremely important to have correct information. So one of the things we do is we work at the CAO's office, with the unions, with the retired association, and with our actuaries in the city attorney's office to make sure we've got correct information. So when that information is considered by the city council, you know what the impact on the city's contribution is going to be, you know what the impact on our funding status is going to be. We have some employee organizations, Police and Fire, that are very active and attend our meetings regularly. So they've got a great interest in keeping their pension system well-funded. And on our side, as an employee of the city and a member of the city employees retirement system, I've also gotten, my staff has, a great interest in making sure that that system is funded well as well. So there's a lot of checks and balances that we have in place right now that I don't think the city of San Diego had. One of the big problems I ran into was that employee members were working with the city organization to defray city contributions and increase their benefits. So they got a triple whammy. So they got a triple whammy, because they defrayed the contributions and put off till tomorrow what they should have funded earlier. They gave themselves increased benefits, that was an added cost to the system, and the market went south. So all three things together really hurt them. We don't have, I think, those, the situation where the city and the employee groups are getting together and making a deal like that. And we just, we've got a great operation right now with the C O's office. They've got good staff that understand the benefits really well, and they know what they're doing there. Inside our own department, we've got some really well-qualified people in the investments arena. One of the things we're also taking a look at within our organization is also hiring a general consultant to bounce ideas off of and to make additional changes on the future for the pension system. We've got audit controls in place, we've got strategic planning going on, so there's a lot of resources that we're putting forward to make sure that our funding status stays right and we keep on track.
And how much money is overall in the pension system?
We're almost at $13 billion.
And when you speak of the $13 billion, Councilman Cardenas, who many people don't know, was chair of the state budget committee, understands numbers well. How do you see you investing this in California firms?
We have an asset allocation plan, and that's one of the biggest tools that we have to manage our investments. We have a professional consultant that helps us with that, as well as staff. Over 90% of the return is attributable to that asset allocation plan. The plan basically says we invest a certain amount, stocks, bonds, and real estate. Real estate is a huge component of that. 10% of our funds are in real estate, so talking $1.3 billion. The mandate there is for us to diversify our investments and to make sure that we have the highest return that we can with the lowest amount of risk. And as part of that portfolio, we have assets that are invested all over the country, including in the West. Our mandate is to do that first and foremost, as opposed to making sure we're invested either locally or in California. There are huge benefits to be derived, as Commissioner-elect Harrigan indicated yesterday, to investing locally and at the same time, to make an investment for the fund. That's one of the things I know our board is interested in and is going to be looking at.
When we want low risk, obviously, with your investments, because we want to protect the principle, are you also looking in a visionary sense, like when D W P is mandated to have 20% renewable by the year 2010, they let out bonds, they work with certain companies that are trying to bring either solar or other kinds of renewables? Can you see some of the portfolio working on some of those kinds of futuristic, and I say worthwhile, projects?
Well, 10% of our fund is dedicated to private equity and alternative investments. And we have, we're in over 100 funds right now that are engaged in things like that. So there's venture capital, special situations, and buyouts. So we're in that mode already.
Thank you, and we look forward to your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Councilmember Reyes. You thought you were going to get off easy, didn't you?
Thank you, Madam President. First, congratulations and thank you. There has been a movement throughout the country where you find that pension funds become now a vehicle by which you can leverage, as long as the return is safe, as long as we take care of the pension. But I've been learning that there are different pension funds being leveraged with other programs that speak to issues like housing and facilities that help our own city. And I don't know how active we've been in that arena or in that focus, but I want to get your impression as to the capacity of going into an area that hasn't been very traditional in pension funds, and how they invest in the infrastructure for our very own Angelinos, who, for the most part, I believe, that most employees live in the city. But I think I'll be surprised to find out where they actually live. But the bottom line is, our own city, how do we recycle our dollars? How do we create the biggest bank for our dollar, for the quality of life in our own city? And I just want to get your perspective on that, given those non-traditional approaches, if you will.
You know, I think that, just to give a little background on myself, I was 10 years old in 1965. So that means I'm 50 now. And at that time, the Watts riots hit in my neighborhood, and the businesses all around the neighborhood were gone. We had a shop in Inglewood and the Fox Hills Mall, and it got created later on. And I know as a kid, we felt deserted, you know, what's going on here? And, you know, the memories never leave you. So I've got a tremendous interest in helping and having the pension system help out with that. But as I pointed to Councilman Cardenas, our first duty is to the fund. We want to make sure that we're squared away there, and if we are taking some actions there, we do them carefully. We get the support of the police and fire unions. I think that's an important part of what we want to plan as a strategy there. I think there's benefits for police and fire as well. You know, if the community becomes safer because of development there, it's a better place for them to work. I think there's a commitment by boards of the pension systems that are being appointed by Mayor Villarreal to invest within the city and to look for opportunities there. So right now, there's a due diligence process that we're going through. What's out there? And how can that fit within the portfolio that we have?
Fantastic. And I've learned through my years in economic development that you come across standards, you come across criteria that real estate and finance companies use in a very traditional way. And it doesn't always fit the realities of some of the places that have a quote-unquote undesirable label because of the poverty level. When you look at it in its real-dollar terms, there's a large volume of dollars in those pockets. And I know I sound like a broken record, but when you talk about 40,000 people per square mile, that means there's a large volume of little wallets, little dollars, that when, in the aggregate, it's a pretty big sum of money. But we tend to ignore it because it doesn't fit the traditional criteria of how decision-makers in the business world, finance, real estate, tend to look at communities. I don't live in a suburb. Most of my district is not a suburb, and therefore, it's labeled a certain way, when in fact, we are overlooking a tremendous resource, given the volume of little dollars. And I won't take the time here right now to talk about the cases, but I can show you real strong cases in my district that are lucrative, they're doing great business, parking lots are full, the cash register is ringing. But if you were to look at it within the context of this other criteria, it shouldn't have been considered. So I'm glad to hear about your orientation, your experience, because it does speak to the possibility of looking at alternative ways of a return, given that our priority is the pension. So thank you so much, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And it's clear that you have huge support in the city council, and there are questions today about preserving our infrastructure and our benefits for our police and firefighters. So thank you very much for being here today and for the city. And so, colleagues, that item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Next order of business, please. Congratulations.
Item number 10 is confirmation of Marcia Hirano Nakaneishi to the Board of Information Technology Commissioners.
Welcome. Our first speaker is Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President. As the Chair of the Committee on Information Technology, unfortunately, I was unable to be at the meeting where we got to talk to Marcia. It was gator hunting. But I'm just going to ask you two questions that I think might be of interest to my colleagues. One, why don't you give us, you have a very impressive background, and I think it would be interesting to my colleagues for you to talk about, you know, what part of your background or what can you bring to the table in terms of the future of the information technology system in the city of Los Angeles?
Hello, I'm Marcia Hirano Nakaneishi, and I work for the California State University System. And I'm kind of like the Census Bureau for the California State University. I know a lot about students, graduation rates, their readiness rates, and the rest. So, you know, I'm very familiar with working with large data sets and information transfers and the rest, and getting the information out to people. What interests me about this board is that information and the uses of technology to get information to people is really a very powerful place in society now. And so I'm hopeful that with the rest of the commissioners and the staff here, to really help do what we need to do in Los Angeles, to really leverage our strengths and provide access to more of the people in Los Angeles.
One of the things I think you might want to speak to, you know, we received a letter from the Ethics Commission that did mention that you might have a potential conflict of interest because of your husband's work on the SBC task force.
Right, my husband is on a committee, a community advisory for SBC that was also trying to do outreach. I believe they are closing that commission, that committee down.
So you feel like that's not going to be a potential?
No, not at all.
Okay, all right. Well, that's good. Again, we want to make sure that, you know, smart people like you, your voice doesn't get diluted because of a conflict of interest on this commission. Let me just ask you one more thing. As you know, we're going through a once-in-10-years cable franchise renewals, then of course, we're going to have the transfers with Time Warner. What do you think we should be looking to get from our cable companies and from this transfer in terms of the residents of Los Angeles? We have a historic opportunity to negotiate some things. What should we be fighting for with these cable companies particularly, for the benefit of the residents of Los Angeles?
Definitely service. You know, there needs to be customer satisfaction and service, and easy ways to access that. I think there's also room for ensuring that the kinds of things that the cable companies provide, in addition to cable, also have broader access for all the residents in Los Angeles. There's probably also some room for some educational outreach that will help us to begin to close the information gaps.
Thank you. Well, I don't have any further questions. Tom Labonge would say, information is knowledge is power.
You're very good.
And, you know, I'm a new chairperson for this committee. I look forward to working with you. I think we are really at a historic moment in Los Angeles. I think the things that we can do technologically are huge. I feel kind of behind the curve. I feel like just when I became wired, the rest of the world went wireless. So, you know, I'm always feeling like I'm a little behind, but I look forward to fighting for what we can to really begin to bring information in new ways to the people of Los Angeles. And I look forward to having you on this commission and looking forward to the great things that we're going to be able to do on behalf of the residents of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Zine.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
I've received some inquiry from some individuals regarding a possible conflict, so I just wanted to explore that area. Your husband, is he compensated for that position with SBC? Or is that a volunteer?
It's a volunteer.
Volunteer?
He was invited to serve on an advisory group.
So he's not paid for that position?
I think he gets...
Stipend?
A stipend.
Okay. The cable operations in Los Angeles, there's been some turmoil, there's been some smooth sailing, there's been more turmoil, there's consolidation. I was approached this morning by a gentleman who asked why we don't consider seniors and have them receive a discount rate. I don't know if that's ever been explored. My response is, while we have cable television in Los Angeles, and it seems that the rates go higher and higher, many seniors on fixed incomes, that may be explored to say, could we have a basic senior rate? I don't know if they offer anything for seniors, but this was brought to me, in particular, Jewish Home for the Aging, where there's a number of seniors, and they have community rooms where they have televisions, but then people get in there and they want a different station, so then they start arguing. So they want to have their own station, I mean, their own television, their own room. And then the cost, $40, $50, $60, whatever the case may be. And if that could be explored, I know we have reduced rates for seniors with the different utilities, but I don't know if the cable industry offers that, but that could be approached for seniors, folks who are on fixed income, to afford them the same opportunity. This issue about the conflict of interest, have you ever been involved in anything where that would bring a conflict, or is it just the fact of your husband's activity with SBC?
I listed it because he has been serving in that capacity, but no, never any conflicts.
And you say that's being dismantled, or his position there?
I believe that he told me that they were nearing the end of those meetings being held.
Okay, because there's obviously some competition with SBC, and the digital, and the cable, and the satellite, and the DISH, and all those different factors that come into play. I know we have an expert, my colleague Bill Rosendahl, who formerly with the cable industry. I think you have great credentials for the position. I see your concern to become a commissioner with that. I know that our general manager is sitting there watching to make sure that she shepherds you through this in a comfortable manner, so I have no problem supporting that. And I wanted to, again, clear up those questions, because they were brought to me regarding those particular issues.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Councilmember Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had, I think, in Councilman Hahn's absence at the last committee meeting, consideration of the nominee before us, and the committee did recommend 2 to 0 to confirm you, so congratulations for making it to this next step. I just wanted to sort of highlight a couple of the issues that were brought up in the committee for discussion. I think the issues on this potential conflict of interest are certainly important, and I'm glad that's been sort of clarified for not the whole council to see, but the whole city to see. Ms. Hahn began to ask questions in regards to the cable franchise agreements that the city has with the various operators in the city. I know we asked for some of your thoughts at that time about the renewals, if you had been briefed, or what you knew about that. Can you just summarize again any briefings that the mayor's office might have provided for you at the department?
I haven't had any briefings as yet regarding the transfer. I did attend the last meeting of BITZI, where the item was discussed to some extent. But, you know, it's a complicated issue, and so I think the interesting piece will be when the proposal is actually coming forward.
Well, you made some comments in committee about a report that had been prepared by one of the commissioners as it related to customer service standards?
Yes, yes, that was very impressive. You know, I think it's important to have standards in place on what we expect to see in terms of satisfaction and customer service, and I think a lot of work has been done in Los Angeles in that. Now we need to make sure that we go forward and implement, because the people of Los Angeles deserve that.
And you should be well aware, and I know this council is well aware, that ITA is playing a huge role in the development and implementation of our 3-1-1 system in Los Angeles. Can you tell us how familiar you may be with that system?
I'm not familiar with it, but I'm looking forward to learning a lot more.
For the future of that system? Okay. And then finally, I know there was a number of other issues that we mentioned, but one that's very important to me is our city's fiber optic infrastructure that we have, again, an area that you haven't been briefed on.
No, I haven't yet.
Okay. Colleagues, it's important to recognize that through the city, through LAPD, through the Department of Water and Power and other efforts, we've laid out a lot of fiber throughout this city. And wisely, I believe, we have overbuilt our fiber infrastructure compared to our current needs, so we're allowing ourselves to grow into additional capacity that we have laid out. I think in the meantime, there's a couple of strategic areas where the city has leased out fiber as a source of revenue for the city of Los Angeles. And so as a member of the committee, I invite you to learn more about those issues and look forward to working with you on those issues. When it comes to 3-1-1 as well, we're trying to raise the bar on customer service, not just for cable, this is for all city services, all municipal functions, for all the people of Los Angeles. There is a very basic 3-1-1 customer service... There's a very basic 3-1-1 customer service phone line that people are able to call. We're trying to take that to the next level as it relates to delivering services for the people of Los Angeles. I'm excited about a parallel online system where people through the city's website can also do everything from reporting the potholes to filing accident reports to paying parking tickets and so much more that is possible through that system. But colleagues, I'll end with this. When it comes to the cable issue specifically, there's a perfect storm hitting Los Angeles right now when it comes to our cable franchise agreements. Yes, we have reached a timeframe for negotiating new franchise agreements with the various operators in the city, and it's not just one, it's a number. We have Adelphia providing service in Los Angeles, we have Time Warner providing service in Los Angeles, we have Comcast providing service in Los Angeles, COGS and Charter are also involved in Los Angeles. We also have, on a national industry-wide basis, the pending purchase of the Adelphia franchises by a partnership between Comcast and Time Warner. So, as we're negotiating new agreements, we have certain Adelphia franchisors that are seeking franchise transfers approvals by the city, and it's still yet unclear as to, wait a minute, is this franchise being sold to Comcast? Is it being sold to Time Warner? Is it being sold to this partnership? And it's going to get swapped later on? What's going on here? And I think we have to make sure that as we're walking through that forest, that we're seeing clearly ahead of us, because technology is evolving every day. The advancement of technology, the services and program offerings that are being sold to customers is changing every day, and at the same time, as Mrs. Zine mentioned, your cable company isn't just competing with other cable companies, it's competing with satellite authors and high-speed internet access by telecommunications companies. So, it's an exciting time.
Absolutely.
To be on the commission, but it certainly is a tremendous responsibility. And again, want to congratulate you on your appointment and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Councilmember LaBonde.
Just a quick thing on information technology. I'm going to ask that a voc'd after motion to give us a rating every year for our departments, are we at A, B, C, D, or whatever else? So that we keep that guideline until we push towards technology. It's real important, because I think each year we need to check to see where we are in technology. Thank you for your service, just think of that when it comes your way.
Okay.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, I rise to this, and for full disclosure, folks, I joined the cable television industry in 1981. It was teleprompter theta becoming Group W broadcasting and cable. Then I had 12 years with Century Cable and four years with Adelphia until they got rid of me. So, a little background on who I am, but let me ask you background on you. Who are you? Give us your bio.
I grew up in Los, actually, I grew up in El Cerrano, went to Multnomah Elementary, Wilson Junior and Senior High School, went to school up in Palo Alto, have a degree in math from Stanford. And then tried to teach for a while and learned that I wasn't patient enough. I went to Salinas and tried really hard, but I wasn't patient enough. So, went on to Harvard in educational policy analysis, and I worked for a while with NIE and other educational research groups. And in about 1983, started with the California State University in institutional research, worked at Cal State LA, at Cal State Northridge, and am now, have been at the chancellor's office since about 89. And I do academic research and resources for them. Probably the thing we're most proud of is adding on to the 11th grade test for the state of California so that students get an early reading on how ready they are for college, because they've taken all the classes we've asked them to, but when they come to us, they haven't quite been up to speed. And so, that's been a very exciting process.
Why do you want to be a commissioner? And what do you hope to accomplish in that role?
I guess I believe a lot in public service and have served on the California Committee of Bar Examiners and done judicial nominee review. And I guess because I work so much with information and with wireless and other things, I guess I see that not enough people are getting access to and training to use the power of information that's out there, and it's going to count more and more for everyone.
Now, what was this issue that my colleagues were talking about regarding your husband? What does your husband do for a living and what does his relationship?
My husband is a professor at UCLA in Asian American Studies. He's been very active with the Asian American community, and he was simply invited by SBC to serve on a community outreach group that was trying to expand access into the different ethnic communities. They meet maybe four times a year or have.
Does he get paid?
He gets the per diem or a stipend to attend the meetings. Pretty much that's what he, what happens, they pay for travel and he gets a stipend.
And you don't see any conflict with that particular group and the cable industry?
Not that I've seen. I mean, it's mostly, well, he hardly ever talks to me about it anyway.
What do you see as your main issues that you'll work with in terms of the community?
At this point, I think probably doing more with the customer satisfaction and service, getting more, more things out to people so that they can get their concerns in and get their problems fixed.
What about rates, cable rates?
That one I'm going to have to learn a lot more about. I do understand that the pricing structure really is with the basic services, and that's about all I've figured out so far.
What's your opinion about the transfer of ownerships, the renewal of the franchises, and the eventual ownership of one cable operator for LA?
I think there needs to be some hearings, because it makes me a little bit nervous that there's, doesn't appear, there may not appear to be very much competition and thereby openness. So, I do think I'm a little concerned, but I need to learn more about how this process is working.
Do you have any understanding on why the franchises weren't renewed two years ago when they were supposed to be renewed?
No, I don't have any background on that.
Do you see any tie-in between the renewal of the franchises and the transfer of ownership in one big global situation?
I can imagine, but I prefer not to speculate on that.
Do you have any interest in particular givebacks that you'd like to see the city of Los Angeles get through this process, like access studios, neighborhood council opportunities to have channels, you know?
Absolutely. That part I do understand as part of the regulations, and it would be nice to see whether we are as open to people in the communities as we might be.
Any notions about senior discounts across the board?
I'd like to explore that. I mean, I think that's a real issue.
And what about the other competition with the satellites? Is there anything that you see from a customer service standard standpoint that could be discussed with them?
I actually don't know enough about that area as yet, but it seems to me that to the extent that they're not physically available to people in Los Angeles, we have some, we have some potential issues, because we'd want people to be familiar with Los Angeles and the kinds of problems that may happen here.
One of the complaints the cable operators have is they're not in a competitive, equal playing field with these folks. Now, some of the city leadership wants to talk about franchise fees for high-speed modems. Is there any opinion you have on that issue?
I'm not sure whether we, well, the little bit that I know is that federal regulations are, there's a gray area on the extent to which we can do that type of thing. And certainly, the feds aren't particularly interested in us moving in that direction.
Have you had a chance to visit the customer service standards that the city now has in place for the cable operators, and if you have, should they be strengthened?
I've skimmed the customer satisfaction regulations that were recently drafted. They seem quite sound. The extent to which they're working yet, I don't know, but I did notice at the last meeting that there's a regular report on complaints, which is very helpful, so that you can really track how you're doing.
When President Padilla said he thought there was a perfect storm, I think it's a perfect opportunity for the city of Los Angeles at this point to visit all of the aspects of our cable franchises, not only in their renewals, but in the transfer of ownerships and to give back to community, and I look forward to your leadership on that subject. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Other members wishing to speak? On item number 10, seeing none, let's open the roll on confirmation, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven and one.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Fourth with on items nine and 10, please. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 32, and that's confirmation of reappointment. Mr. Robert Chick to the Board of Library Commissioners and Arts Parks Committee waived consideration of that matter.
Okay, colleagues, we have our nominee making his way front and center. Mr. Chick, is this your first time to City Hall?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmembers, old friends. I was sitting back there remembering, and I think the first time I was confirmed before this body was 1976, and there were no electronic, electronic boards. So, this is nearly 30 years since the first time I appeared before the city council for confirmation. It's a pleasure to be here, and thank you for having me here.
Welcome back. We do have a couple of councilmembers wishing to speak or ask questions. Colleagues, we'll call your attention to a report from the Controller's Office recommending a Novo. Mr. Zine.
I noticed the controller was in the chamber. I don't know if she's still here or not.
She lobbying you too?
No, she didn't, but she doesn't need to lobby me on this one. I've known the commissioner for a long time, we go way, way back. So, I think it's a wonderful position. I've seen you around town, some of the events. Thirty years you've been serving on commissions. Is it any quicker now than it was 30 years ago? Or it's 11:40, does it take as long as it used to?
We're still unpaid.
We're still unpaid. Okay. So, you're doing that public service for the people of Los Angeles. I know you're doing a fine job. I see our librarian there smiling. Get that parking lot squad away from me, ma'am librarian. Thank you. Chief librarian of the city of Los Angeles. No, I appreciate the continuing support you have from me and the work you're doing. Thank you.
Ms. Grohl.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. And Robert, it's great to see you here and glad that you've agreed to commit to serve on the library commission again and use your amazing skills and knowledge base to improve and continue to work with Fontaine, our wonderful general manager. We talk frequently about the fact that library bonds, not only did we build on time and under budget our libraries, but we also were able to build two additional libraries, four, now additional libraries with that effectiveness. And I think the library has become an incredible community resource and is a great place and somewhere that my son goes once a week to our library, and it's a great place there in Studio City and the one also in North Hollywood. But I just wanted to add that I'm very happy that you're going to continue to serve, and you have been an experienced commissioner and one that I think we look forward to working with again in the future.
Mr. LaBonde.
Mr. Chick, thank you. Proud member of the 4th District. I appreciate you living in this district and committed for almost 20 years of service in various roles with the city. Where do you see libraries 20 years from now?
Well, thanks for asking a question. First of all, let me thank you all on behalf of the nearly 14 million patrons of our libraries and the million and a half of us who carry this library card, which basically is the free entry for our citizens of Los Angeles into a whole world of education, information, and just neighborhood activities. We have just finished, or about to finish, the bond program. And as the council member mentioned, we did it on time, under budget, thanks to our chief librarian, Fontaine Holmes, and her deputy pet keeper who's over here. Everybody in the city who's worked on these projects should be here getting an award for what they did, to add that in this day and age, to come in under budget and create money for four additional libraries is amazing. What I would like to thank you for is in this last budget, you did increase our materials budget by $2 million, and without materials, libraries don't operate, and this is very difficult under tough budget times. So, this shows and indicates to us your tremendous support for our library, our library system. Regarding your question, Mr. LaBonde, you know, our city's growing, our neighborhood demand for libraries, you know, libraries are the positive face of city government. And I know you've all been there, if you stand at the door when we open our libraries, the smiling people who are coming in there, the underserved, who don't own computers, who can't buy books for their children, who can't have programs, pay for programs for their children or their teens or their senior parents, those are all provided by our library system here in the city of Los Angeles. And we have to look and see how our communities are growing. Take a look at whether or not we need another bond issue in the near future, begin to prepare for that, because this is a growing city, demand for library services is increasing, and I can commit to all of you that our library, our library department and all of you who support libraries will continue to be the leading library city in Los Angeles.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chick. Outstanding member, and also, as you mentioned, the staff, not just those who are here, the Fontaine Holmes, but all the staff. And I think it's a small amount of staff, like about eight of you total, who've done all this work in a sense with the help of other departments, so it's a credit to your focused energy and your commission. Thank you very much. Last question, what's your favorite book as a child?
Oh, let's see, what did we take out of the library 50 years ago? It's probably overdue right now. I don't have an answer to that one. It was too long ago.
Ask me, Mr. Commissioner.
What's your favorite?
Mike Mulligan in The Steam Shovel. Thank you very much. Winger Branch Library at Santa Monica Boulevard and Madison Avenue.
Mr. Rosendahl.
I just want to say congratulations. I've known you for 24 years. Why do you want to continue to serve us like this? And tell us about what your vision is on this new commission.
Well, thank you. You know, the question came when I was looking at whether I wanted reappointment. Of the many commissions, and many, but the several commissions I've served on over the last 20 years, all of which were very important to the city, including my initial commission, which granted cable franchises, believe it or not, the initial cable franchises, the airport, which did so many different things for our citizens. The greatest joy I've gotten is the last four years of being involved with our city libraries. It has been a unique experience for me, and I think an experience in which I, given four more years, can continue to contribute to the expansion of our libraries, to the provision of programs for our libraries, working on the private sector contributions, because our library needs that private sector money. And through the library foundation, which is extremely active, we are able to raise millions of dollars and hopefully millions more to provide these programs. So, when I sat down and asked, "Did you want to do this again?", it was an easy answer because it does so much for the citizens of Los Angeles. So, that's mine.
I really appreciate that answer, and just again, for full disclosure, Mayor Reardon had asked me to help him fundraise for the libraries in the year 2000 as we were going through that situation, and the industry came up with $2.7 million, of which Adelphia put a million in, and AT&amp;T put a million in, and three programmers did, and most of that money went to the libraries to go forward. So, the cable industry was a great public servant at that point, and congratulations for some of its responsibilities.
Other members of the council wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, let's open the roll on confirmation, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven and one.
Congratulations. Fourth with on item 32, please. Colleagues, at this time, I'd like to take item 54 and 59 out of order and call forward Ms. Valinda Jo Wright to speak on item 54 and 59. Madam Clerk, joint public hearing on these two items, please. Madam Clerk, joint public hearing on these two items, please.
Good morning, everyone, almost afternoon. Being a victim of violence changes you as you are in a, if you're an evolved thinker like Councilman Parks, perhaps the city recognizes you for a proclamation because you lend time to advocate the necessity of domestic violence programs for, oh, I wrote that before I read the paper this morning. For other evolved thinkers, in that moment of clarity after viewing a loved one, you know there will be no eye for an eye. The answer is no. No other mother will experience that kind of devastation because I gave into violence. Can we pump the brakes and stop the violence?
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on items 54 and 59. Members of the council wishing to speak on these items? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Both of those items are approved. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Sure. Colleagues, this is a general public comment for today's meeting, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. If I can ask the clerk to please put up a clock. The council calls forward Donna Doherty, followed by Ruth Sarnoff, Valinda Jo Wright, and our delegation from the South Central Farmers.
Thank you very much, President and council members. I'm getting to be an old timer here. I'm sorry, but I just have to keep coming back. And I'm here once again to talk about the lack of access at the front entrance of Griffith Observatory. And I must, just as a little deviation here, I would like to say I was very pleased to see the representatives from the Central American community here today. Yo quiero decir buenos dias a mis amigos y mis estudiantes en la ciudad de Los Angeles. And for them and for all of the other people that we have here in the city, from every country in the world, and from, for all of the people who are coming to visit us from every country in the world, we would ask that something be done and be done as quickly as possible to make that entrance accessible. There's no reason why it can't be. And I did want to thank Councilman Labange and the members of the committee, Arts Parks and Aging yesterday, and Councilman Labange for saying that you would be willing to put together a group meeting in your office with Dr. Krupp from the Observatory, Brenda Levin from the Preservation Architects Office, and the lead engineer, I'm assuming you meant Neil Drucker, I'm not sure. But I would think that it would be a good idea, perhaps, that we could get other members of the public and if we were not able to put it on the, excuse me, if we were not able to put it on the agenda here that we have a big meeting and that it be open to the public. The public doesn't seem to be involved in this in any way, except us extracting the money from them for this project and then not asking anything from them about their opinions. We need that. And I don't know, does anybody here know that we have the largest Veterans Administration in the United States right at our doorstep here? Then why aren't we thinking about them? Why are we not thinking about the bodies we brought back from other wars and the ones we're bringing back now? They should have first place to get in the front entrance of that building.
Ma'am, if I can ask you to conclude, we have other speakers under public comment today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Sarnoff, Mr. Jo Wright.
Thank you for this opportunity to address you today. I'm very concerned that in the normal way big institutions work, that in developing a comprehensive plan, emergency plans for the City of Los Angeles to deal with public disasters of any kind, earthquake or other disasters, that this will not be a rapid process. And my concern today is that perhaps it's, would be important to begin to have a real fast-track approach to this, because a crisis can come at any time. It doesn't wait for plans to be necessarily fully implemented. I really hope that the, many of the infrastructures of this city will be strengthened to meet that. We know that we have a very large homeless population, including many homeless children, including homeless children in our schools. We know that we have a real crisis in low income and just housing in general. We also have problems in medical availability of emergency medical. And I think the whole public policy and the development of this needs to be broadened. The dialogue needs to incorporate more people. So I'm just urging that this, that this take place. In New Orleans, there were 134,000 people without cars. I think we could probably, in Los Angeles, double or triple that number. And so I ask that we look at the poverty equation and ask ourselves, when it comes to public policy, is it just poor judgment or eventually is it just really criminal negligence? If we don't move to have emergency plans, and I have three articles, one from the Scientific American that shows in 2001, they very definitively showed what was going on with the loss of, every 24 minutes, the loss of one acre of land there in Louisiana. So, you know, this is the kind of information we need to put together. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Is Ms. Valinda Jo Wright still here? If not, I believe she delivered her message and her testimony for item 54 and 59. Colleagues, our next group of speakers is from the South Central Farmers. We have with us today Luis Morales, Lidia Morales, Alfredo Cabrera, Remedio Zapata, Salvador Navarro, Javier Ramirez, Teodoro Sanchez, Jose Maria Ochoa, and then Mr. Bill Hui on another item after they speak.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Remedio Zapata, y vengo en representación de 350 familias que por motivo de su trabajo ellos no pueden asistir. Y como siempre venimos a pedirles que nos ayuden a conservar el jardín. Gracias.
My name is Remedio Zapata. I'm here representing 350 people or families. And a lot of them are not able to be here because of work. But I'm here to ask for your support. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Soy Lidia Morales. Vengo pidiendo su ayuda, su apoyo. Aquí con todos mis compañeros. Somos puras personas ya mayores y esperamos que nos apoyen, nos ayuden. Gracias.
Thank you. My name is Emilia Morales. I'm here, we're here to ask for your help and assistance. We're elderly people and we're asking for your support. Thank you.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Alfredo Cabrera. Estoy representando aquí un grupo de compañeros de trabajo que estamos cultivando un jardín que está situado en la Alameda y la 41. Somos aproximadamente 40, 400 campesinos que algunos ya no trabajamos tiempo completo. Y a mi manera de pensar, y creo que muchas personas lo entienden también, pues es un pasatiempo bastante bonito porque eso nos evita descongestión a las calles de gente de mal vivir. Y damos con ejemplo pues de personas sanas y trabajadoras.
My name is Alfredo Cabrera. We're a group of, I'm here with a group of my fellow coworkers. We're a farming community. They're a farm in a garden at Alameda and 41st Street. We're representing about 400 farmers. Some of us do not work full-time. I think it's a very nice hobby. It also, besides a hobby, helps us stay away from the streets and keep other people and other bad elements away from the street. We appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Mr. Bill Hui.
Good morning, Councilwoman Padilla, esteemed members of the Los Angeles City Council. I do public relations for the Florentine Gardens, which is a very famous nightclub restaurant in Hollywood. It's in the pipeline. It's going to be coming up in a few weeks as a matter for the council to decide whether or not to eminent domain this property. There are two main issues that we've been stressing. The first one is, when the selection of a new firehouse in the Hollywood area was brought before the Hollywood United Neighborhood Council, the president of the council at that time lobbied very aggressively that the city should take the Florentine Gardens. At that time, the president was Mr. Joel Fisher, and he never revealed to the public or to the members of the Hollywood United Neighborhood Council that he was on the payroll of the Florentine Gardens' main competitor, which is a nightclub on Vine Street called The Palace. We feel that's a conflict of interest that has corrupted the process. And the second point I want to make today is the Florentine Gardens sits on a property of 166,000 square feet. If you multiply that times $400, which is the current market value of Hollywood frontage property between La Brea and the freeway, it's going to come out to $68 million. And that's not even including the fair market value of the building, the landmark, or the business. So if we brought in a business consultant, we could probably prove that the combined value of everything is near $100 million. And that's a lot of money for the city to spend to build a firehouse where you could build one nearby, probably acquire the property and build it for about $15 million. And the third point, and I appreciate the time and the courtesy, is the Florentine Gardens is probably the most successful Latina-owned nightclub in L.A. The present owners had it in '79. It's an icon in the community. It would be a shame to lose it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This concludes the general public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number two, and that was called special for a card from the public.
And the council calls forward Timothy Marais and Erica Valdivias. Thank you for your patience this morning.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, first, I'd just like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to plead our case and here, you know, consider the case before you record the $5,600 lien against the property that we own. My wife and I, we bought the house about a year ago. And when we bought it, it was in, you know, obviously a state of disrepair. And but since we've owned it, we fixed the property up, and we spent a lot of money, and we've obviously improved the neighborhood and the community by fixing the property up. You know, we kept it very well-maintained, and we haven't had any problems with the city. We've been in total compliance. Everything the Department of Building and Safety has asked us to do, we've done it. We've got the permits, and we've paid a considerable amount of money to the city, you know, for these permits. And we spent a lot of money repairing the property, over $120,000. And we just feel that it's unfair to punish us for what the previous owner, you know, did, which was let the property fall into disrepair. And we're just trying to appeal to your sense of reason based, you know, on what is, you know, right and fair. I mean, if we had let the property go, punish us, but we didn't. They did. So, you know, and a lot of this work was done over four years ago. And when we bought the property, we were under the impression that the city had been paid for it. So we're just asking if you could, you know, dismiss the charges, you know, based on circumstances.
Thank you very much.
Would you dismiss it?
Well, procedurally, what we need to do is finish hearing you out when you're going to speak, and then the council will begin to deliberate on the item.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. This concludes public comment on item number two. Members wishing to speak? Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is in my district, Building Safety here, on this matter.
You can come to the table.
You can come to the table, please. I'd like to hear from the Building and Safety Department on this particular matter. We've got two matters. One was continued in my district, and this is the second. I take a very strong view of property that is not maintained. It becomes a nuisance and eyesore for the community. And in the 3rd District, Frank Bush, the principal inspector out there, has been very aggressive at my direction in going out and citing and taking enforcement action so we can maintain the quality of life. So to the folks that are here, the concern that we have is to maintain a healthy quality of life environment and not let property decay, which brings down the entire neighborhood and all the associated factors. I've heard your comments. I'd like to now hear from the representatives of Building Safety as far as what information, and if we have sufficient information today to make a decision, or if we need to gather additional information. If you'll please comment on that.
Dave Lawrewood, Building and Safety Councilman. We, much like many of these other jobs that we, for these assessments are made, we do follow a specific process with time limits. And we do go out of our way to communicate verbally and also in written form to make sure that the owners of these properties are properly notified and before these assessments come into play. Now, as far as any specifics, questions you may have relative to how far along this process is coming, I'm going to defer to my colleague here.
I noticed you've got a paper about three inches thick, if not more, the timeframe, the activities that are taking place. They mentioned that there was a previous owner. Is that part of this, if you could just comment and respond to the questions on this? I think the assessment's over $5,000.
What they stated was true, that since they've taken over the property, they have done what they were asked to do by Building and Safety, where I disagree with possibly one thing that was stated was the not knowing that the fees were due. We have copies of all the recordings that were placed on the property, letting anyone who was interested in buying, certainly any title company who had done the research for the purchase of this property, would know that these fees were due.
The fees were assessed. Can I get that mic back on? Were assessed with the previous owner? The previous owner let it go into decay?
Yeah. Whenever we do any work on a property, the day we execute the work order, we also place a recording on the property. So any potential buyer, like the new owner, knows that there's money due. And that, for that reason, he knew the money was due, or he knew some money was due when he purchased the property, or he maybe has a grief with his title company.
Okay, so when the title search was done, that would be brought up. And if it wasn't done, then there's an issue with the title search. I noticed the man giving a negative response. What I'd like to do is continue this, if we could, for a week, and get together with the gentleman, I don't know if you've met with the gentleman who's here, and discuss those issues, those issues that are in conflict, we can resolve or not resolve. And then, Mr. President, we could bring this back next week with the answer to those questions. And if it's the title company you need to go after, we'll give you that direction. But they do have the documents here. I understand if you've cleaned the property up, we appreciate that. If it was in decay, in disrepair, and you purchased it, and that wasn't known to you, then maybe there's recourse. But the city, if they expend dollars to take that property and fence it and clean it up, whatever the case they be, that has to come back to taxpayers. So what we're going to do is continue this for a week. You'll get together with Building and Safety, Mr. President, and then we'll go back in a week if that's okay with all the parties, and that's okay with me. So thank you very much. That'd be the motion.
Without objection.
Thank you.
So we're not going to act on it today. We'll put it back on agenda for a week from now. And in the meantime, y'all can chat and see if we can't resolve it. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Zine. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is item number three, and that was called special for a card from the public.
We do have two speaker cards, Mary Ann McQuatter, to be followed by Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. Colleagues, this is item number three.
Good morning, or good afternoon, President Padilla and Councilmembers. The house in question The house in question is, I homesteaded that house in July of 2003. That was my only house. That's where I live at. I homesteaded that property. And I don't think that Building and Safety has jurisdiction over homesteaded property. I'm not quite sure. I was having the property repaired. A lady said that she was going to help me. So she was there on the property at the time. She said she was going to help me to make repairs to it. And at the time that Building and Safety came, they're called the Abandonment and Vacant Lot Unit. That house was neither abandoned nor was it vacant at the time. And I told Mr. Inspector Masaius that the lady had permission to be on there because she was helping me to make repairs to it, because I was moving into the building, into the house. I wanted to bring up another jurisdictional issue. The Commission held a, the Building and Safety Commission held a hearing on the seventh of December, and their decision, on the back of the, on the second page, it says that if it doesn't have a stamp on it, it's not valid. And I don't know if this, I don't think this one has a stamp on it. I don't know. This thing may not be valid, because I don't see a stamp on it. Building and Safety Commission, that's a jurisdictional issue. And then I wanted to raise that on December the seventh, like I said, there was a hearing scheduled, and the Building and Safety failed to give me a proper notice. They only sent me, one, they sent me one page, one page, and the page did not comply with law. It does not comply with law. It does not comply with Municipal Code 918907.3, which details what this letter should contain. It doesn't say that. In addition, the, the, it doesn't comply, their hearing did not comply with other codes. For example, they're required by law, when you, when you notify somebody for a hearing, you have to give them the information and an opportunity to respond. Well, I really didn't have an opportunity to respond, because they only gave me one page. But they had, they had given this to the commission, this big stack right here, and they had this whole stack of papers. I didn't receive this before the hearing. Only received one paper, and that's that one letter, which does not comply with the law under, like, let me see, what law is that?
Let me ask you to conclude, please.
I just say, let me see, let me see. Give you an example, this, that's not the law. It's Skelly versus the State Personnel Board. There are specific things that you have to do to, you have to give a person the facts and the charges. It doesn't have the facts in this one page, and it doesn't have the charges. So I really couldn't respond to it. Also, your statute says, Municipal Code says that when you have a hearing, you have to get this notice at least 15 days before the hearing. Well, how can I get a notice 15 days before the hearing? When the hearing was presented the seventh, and he wrote this December the first, how can I get it? I never got this.
Okay, ma'am. If you wrap up, we can get the council deliberation.
I'm just, I'm just, I really don't want to lean place on it, because first of all, they didn't go along with the statute. Secondly, I'm pursuing this issue in court, because they didn't comply with the statute. I didn't get, they didn't meet the notice requirement.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And then, I wanted to say, can I just say one last thing?
Sure.
Okay. Even your statute for Building and Safety says that after a hearing, you can appeal to the Building and Safety Commission. Well, I went to, after the hearing, December the seventh, I went to the commission, and that was the first time I got these papers. I got it on December the seventh. Then I asked them to let me speak to the Building and Safety Superintendent of Building and Safety, because it says that you can speak to the Building and Safety Superintendent. But they wouldn't let me speak to him. I don't even know who he is. I asked Andrew Longoria, and I asked Roxanne Rocky Gordon to let me speak to the Building and Safety Commission, and they, I mean, built Superintendent of Building, but they wouldn't let me speak to him, and they wouldn't tell me who he was. So I just started sending faxes to various people.
Thank you. Let me ask you to conclude. We do have another speaker on your item, and then the council will take this up. Ms. Hawkins? Or just hold on a second. I'm just asking you to wrap up. We're going to hear from Ms. Hawkins, and then the council's going to deliberate on your item.
Okay. And I just want to say that I did not receive a final notice. There was no final notice.
Okay. Ms. Hawkins?
Can I please have my three minutes, please? Thank you.
Go ahead.
Can I have my three minutes, please?
Go ahead.
I don't want to argue with you today. I want to have my three minutes, that's all. Thank you.
It's okay. I'm watching the clock, and it's running.
I want three minutes. Anyway, I can have my three minutes. I don't want to go over five.
You're cutting into your own time. Go ahead.
On number three, again, before passing this contract, we would like to alert all directors of this new planning of contracts. Using these methods of new ownership after the real owner is dead will not work with false documents or no documents at all. The construction team, whom has built the building, can't be hired as a team to build and fake they are the new owners of the firm. We must say no on any inheritance from any family, business, country, prime minister, bishop, or precedent of old or new. These fake owners can't just take over machinery or equipment, money, new laws of businesses, and plan of businesses. All this type of dealing and settlements shall be demolition of all businesses, schools, churches, restaurants, and juvenile hall jail systems. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on item number three. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask staff from Building and Safety come up. Colleagues, as the staff comes up, I think we'll find that this building that is in question, they've been working with the owner since, I believe, 1998. Could you give us a little scenario as to your contacts and what the issues are, and if you can, comment to Ms. McFadden's concerns as it relates to notice and what the process has brought us to here today?
Thank you, Councilman. Dave Law with the Department of Building and Safety. Historically, this has had a long history, as you're aware of. We've taken every turn to make sure that this lady has been notified. She has been notified. We've been in court at least two different times where the judge has actually made a finding that, she has been notified. She's attended our Building and Safety Commission. She was notified in ample time for that, along with all the details of the property itself. We have a lot of extensive documentation, not only on the notification, but also on the fact that this building had been vacant for about 10 years. We have proof of that, and it just, I mean, it just goes on and on.
What is the proof that you have, is that it was been vacant?
When we went out on the site in 97, the building was open and vacant. As a matter of record, we have dates when different inspectors all through this time had gone out there. We called DWP and asked them how much power or water had been used in the property, and they said it had been dead for about 10 years. As far as stating that she homesteaded the property, we checked in on that, and that has no bearing on whether a property is abated. In fact, it's illegal to homestead a property if you're not living there. And there was no water or power use. In fact, if she was there, it was in violation of the law, because once the property has an abate notice posted on it, it cannot be lived in. We can check through, and she can pick any month she wants to, any year, and we have inspection notes of inspectors being out there, and she was not living there at the time.
Could you give us a little thumbnail as to some of the dates in each year it looks like for the last five to six years? There's been some work done by the city to bring this nuisance property up to par?
We started the process 5/1/97. Spectator revealed the following: damaged chimney above roof, non-working floor furnace, exposed Romex, that's wiring, damaged water heater leaking, missing egress windows, in other words, the escape windows to the bedrooms. They received a letter from Ms. McFadden in 1/2098, so she was aware of it then. Grass, it says, different, you know, it's hard for me to give you the exact dates when, unless I sit and read the entire document.
I was just wondering if you give us by year, if there's certain years, because it looks like we've had contact since 97 through the current year, that you just give us a thumbnail of what are the types of things that we cited and have gone out and repaired?
Well, I can give you real details in the past few years here on, we barricaded the building on 3/10/04. We went back and repaired the barricade again on 7/30/04. We went back and repaired the barricade again on 10/14/04. We went out and we fenced the property on 3/10/04. We went and cleaned the property on 3/10/04. We painted out the graffiti on the property on the same day, 10/3/10/04. That would be the standard things. And then, once we went to a Building and Safety Commissioner hearing, because of the fact that the barricades got broken into multiple times, we went before the Board of Building and Safety Commissioners. She sent a fax the night before stating she wasn't notified, and we brought in the return receipts to show that she personally signed for the notification. We keep every single document we do. Every return receipt is kept in the file. They saw the fact that she had personally signed for the document, and so they continued to have the hearing without her, because they stated that the fact that she's telling them that she didn't receive something, and we have written proof of her own signature that she did receive it, they went ahead and had the hearing. She then went before a judge and tried to get the demolition stopped. The judge read all the documentation and said, yes, you were notified, and he wouldn't stop it. She tried again with the judge to get it to stop. The judge again said, no, I'm not going to stop it. Twice, we went before the courts.
So we went to the courts twice and before the commission?
Before the Board of Building and Safety Commissioners. And I personally pleaded with her to do something with the property. I've been in contact with her multiple times, and she seemed like she'd say she was going to do something, and she just wouldn't.
Let me ask you one other question. On the agenda today, is item one also a property that's owned by Mrs. McFadden?
I think she's part-owner on that one.
Okay. So we've had history on other properties?
She owns multiple properties in the city of Los Angeles.
Okay. And so the issue is for notification. We've covered that. We've had full extended hearings before the courts and Building and Safety. We've made repeated contacts with her, which is verified by her receipt of the letters. We've gone to the property numerous times and completed repairs, and eventually, we even basically tore the property, the housing, down because of this nuisance. So that's kind of a thumbnail of what we've done. Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. President, I think from looking at what Building and Safety said, and certainly comparing it to what Mrs. McFadden said today, it's clear record that the city's done all in its power to bring this property up to code, and even to the point of finally tearing it down. And now, we are moving forward with roughly about a $36,000 expenditure of which the city has put forth to provide these services. And so I'd ask that we no longer continue this, that we move forward, that we prove this item after this hearing, and cause this to go forward. It's something that clearly is an indication to the community that the city has put forth all of this effort. It's a nuisance to where complaints have come in. It's not something in which the city just went out and picked this property. It's something in which they're responding to complaints, nuisances, and hazards, and safety issues in the community. So I'd ask that we have an eye vote on this issue.
Members of the council wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, let's open the wall in Mr. Parks's motion. Close the wall and tabulate the vote.
Can I?
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item number eight, and that was called special for a card from the Republic.
And we have three speaker cards on item number eight. Ms. Gilda Haas, followed by Lizette Hernandez and Avi Benenfeld.
Good afternoon, morning. My name is Lisa Hernandez, and I'm with FICCHES, the Figueroa Corridor Coalition for Economic Justice. We just, first of all, thank you for taking time to listen to us. We wanted to uplift this really exciting example of how communities and developers can come together and create a plan that benefits everyone. You know, we are in support of this item number eight for a couple of reasons. We're pleased with the outcomes. YWCA Urban Campus is going to be built. We're very excited about that. Also, we are looking to establish the Figueroa Corridor Community Land Trust, which we think will address the issues of gentrification in our neighborhoods by directly involving grassroots folks. And we wanted to specifically thank Councilmember Jan Perry, Councilmembers Ed Reyes, the CRA staff, also CD8 and CD9 staff, the Planning Department, and all the parties that came together. We thank Williams and Dane for coming to the table, and for AEG Staples for all their support. And I think in the back, we also have the students who are going to be part of the urban campus. So if they could please stand. Thank you very much.
Lisa, that said everything. This is Gilda Haas. I don't need to speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Avi Benenfeld. I represent the owners of the southwest corner of Pico and Flower. And while we're very pleased about the prospects of a large quality building going up at this site, we also have a few concerns, and they are the traffic, the noise, the parking situation for the existing tenancy, and just the disproportionate uses of funds, and if any resources or funds have been made available to neighboring properties to soften the impact of this large project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes our public comment on this item. Members wishing to speak, Mr. Race and Ms. Terry both queued up.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this is a historic day, a historic day, and I just want to say, you know, every now and then, it's nice to be thanked. Thank you. That's really, that felt nice, okay? I just want to say, thank you. And thank you to Ed, too. And you know what I'm talking about, okay? It was, you know, politics is always like a stormy relationship. We love one day, falling out the next, but right now, we're in love, and it feels good. And it's a great project that will help young people like the students who are in the back and create long-term sustainable growth for the corridor and perpetuation of the land trust. So, plus we're going to get some new housing. So it's going to be wonderful. This is a tremendous week for the corridor and all those who care about it, as we celebrate L.A. Live tomorrow, and I expect good things to continue southward, westward, and possibly a little southwest, if you know how to act. I don't know. So, anyway, it's good. Thank you.
Mr. Race.
Only reason I was patting Janet back, because it's good to comfort her every once in a while with those thank yous. But I am pleased to present the Plum Committee Report approving the amendments to the Development Agreement for the L.A. Sports Entertainment District. The changes essentially allows us, as Councilperson Perry, with her leadership and her work through her office, to satisfy the affordable housing and childcare requirements of a development agreement initiated by the L.A. Arena Land Company, whose parent company is the Antrons Entertainment Group. Just to note, this agreement does include an exclusionary zoning requirement. Just to note, this agreement does include an exclusionary zoning requirement, but 20% of the market areas to be built, has set aside for affordable housing. We are in a position now where, as is stated, affordable housing units for families of Figueroa Corridor and adjacent Pico Union Area District as well, and the areas around the arena in general. It's a great example of creative tension. It was interesting to see AEG actually in partnership with Figueroa Corridor, given the history, how that evolved. But it was fascinating to see the great work of Fay Washington and groups that are coming forward with this very exciting project that deals with how you train and allow for people to develop skills to become independent, and that is just as important. So I want to take a moment to thank AEG, headed by Ted Tanner, and advised by Bill Dalbeck from Nathan and Watkins, the Figueroa Corridor Coalition, economic justice led by Gilda Haas, and the 29-member Alliance of Community Labor, Religious, and Student Organizations. The coalition was advised by Ben Beach of the Legal Aid Foundation, thank you. You have Homer Williams and James Atkins of Williams and Dane's, of course Fay Washington from YWCA, and the city staff, planning department, CRA. And last but not least, my staff, Joe Gubotan, and his hard work. A lot of this was present setting of the hard work of then-Councilman Mike Hernandez when we were dealing with these agreements way back when, when this was surfacing, so I want to thank him as well for his historic effort. But this essentially, I need to state certain verbiage here for the city attorney to make sure this follows through. We have distributed the report to you. The city attorney has advised that this matter is not a time limit filed as stated on the agenda, so there is no time limit for a council to act by law. If councilors need more time, that is okay. However, I urge my colleagues to act promptly today. Since all issues have been addressed, I move that the council adopt the Plum Committee Report. And again, it's a great example of how partnerships can come together and look at the greater good for all concerned. So thank you so much. I urge you an eye vote for the Plum Committee Report.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Is Jan still here? There she is. Jan Perry, council member. You mentioned spreading love around, don't forget the San Fernando Valley, because we're looking for opportunities to participate in this endeavor. And I know that the valley residents have a long commute, so hopefully with the new Orange Line and AEG giving us a monorail, you ready for that, Chris? A monorail from the valley to Staples to enhance our transportation. I'm putting Chris Bledzinski on the line, on the spot here. But the concern is, we need to have some improvement to the downtown area. Ed, I know that your planning background, I've saw the cornfields now, I saw that on television, we are really revitalizing this entire area. And we go to other metropolitan areas around this country, and we see a thriving nighttime entertainment, and here it's sporadic in different areas. This will be the magnet that we've been waiting for, for a long, long time. And I look back at the convention center and see what dismal performance we have there, and I look at Staples and see what wonderful opportunities have existed there, and it seems that the private enterprise, working in a cooperative relationship with government, we can make that marriage happen, and make it happen for the people in the community, make it happen for the jobs, make it happen for the benefit of all. So congratulations to the great ninth district. Gil Lindsay would be very proud of you, Jan Perry, making this happen. Well, I know that you were commenting it was a wonderful day, and I just wanted to chime in, because sometimes they forget us, forget about us out there way out in the San Fernando Valley. So we want to acknowledge that, and also from the West Side, Westchester.
From the West Side, Westchester.
Oh, about for Gil Lindsay. So it's a wonderful opportunity to make it all happen, and Chris, you can quit perspiring, we're going to pass this. We have 10 votes right now. If I walked out, I'd only have nine, so I'm going to stick around and vote yes on it. Thank you.
Other members of the council wishing to speak or pose questions at this time? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Can I?
That is approved.
And the ordinance is over one week.
Mr. Reyes.
Council President, I need to move to reconsider item 61.
Let's open the roll, reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Can I?
Item 61 is now back before us.
Thank you, Council President. I'm doing this on behalf of Councilman Garcetti, who's with us here today, but 61A has been distributed. It provides a technical language for El Centro de Ayuda Corporation to allow a contract to be executed. This organization was selected under an RFP process to provide services under the L.A. Bridges Program. Previous council action, the organization was inevitably omitted from the council's action. Item 61 today's agenda, along with 61A, will correct this omission. Funding is already allocated in CDD's budget. It's a technical move that we need to address to make sure they get their just due in the funding. This is to adopt 61 and 61A.
Any objection, colleagues? Let's consider item 61 as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Can I?
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 22, and that was called special by Councilmember Parks.
And we do have a speaker card on item 22 from Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Good evening, my name is Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. Again, on number 22, we must say no. We cannot protect the public animal people, our residents, and they have broke the law. We must change the section codes in United States of American Government and arrest Councilwoman Janice Heim, whom is illegally stealing these crocodiles to take overseas to Japan for money, illegal surgeries, and coning for research in making babies and embryos to keep animal people alive in society. It is illegal to work these kind of people in United States of America. I believe if a man hit a woman, he is lower than a dog. Beating our animals or sexing up our animals of any kind and cutting off their tongues so they can't speak or fight back, these animal people are out of order. Her name or job title, Councilwoman Janice Heim, shouldn't be used to protect her wickedness or property.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on item 22. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. Padiya. Thank you. I would ask Mr. Karsch, for a minute, on looking at this support for SB 506, I just wanted to see if, one of the things we're struggling with in the city is so much illegal treatment towards our animal regulation employees, many of which are not appointed, and many of which are not elected, but certainly are put into a variety of situations where people have come to their homes, they have basically intimidated them at their work site of variety of things. I'm just wondering on this legislation, to what level for those employees with animal regulations would this cover, and do we have an option of attempting to add other levels so that, because of this unique situation that we have in the city of L.A.?
Michael Karsch with the Legislative Analyst Office. We have two bills before the council. One has to do with the posting of personal identification information through the internet. That is the Evans Bill, AB 1595, which is before the governor. The other bill by Senator Puchigian, SB 506, was on the second House floor and was pulled, so it's a two-year bill, it will continue to be considered next year. That has to do with the confidentiality of voter information, which is where some of the information on identification of public officials has been obtained. There are ways in which, there's DMV information, there's voter information, there's the use of the internet to publish information. So the bills, the two before you deal with only two categories, and that's internet misuse of personal information, and that is the one before the governor, and the recommendation is to support. The other one has to do with voter files, and that will be considered next year. In both cases, there will be some applicability to animal regulation people. If they are officers in animal regulation, and they are also peace officers, then they have confidentiality assured. If the general manager of animal regulation is an appointed official, then that should provide some degree of confidentiality. I also have Sue Franz from the city attorney's office who has reviewed this, and she can elaborate with better specificity.
Thank you, yes, Sue Franz, L.A. City Attorney's Office. Perhaps with the second bill, the SB 506, if you look at the enumerated list of public safety officials, which I believe is defined in Government Code Section 625424, it is a list right now of eight, and perhaps including elected or appointed officials and other, like the city attorneys and attorneys representing cities and criminal matters, that perhaps an extension to that definition of a public safety official could be expanded to include the non-peace officers, which is subsection one, under that definition, to see if it can be expanded to include those working members of our government.
Would that be amendment to this bill, would that have to be a separate piece of legislation?
No, you should be able to amend it, since it's a one-subject matter, and that perhaps as an official position that you could seek to additionally amend it. As to the one that's on the governor's desk, obviously, we're tied to the four corners of it, and they talk about elected or appointed officials, and there's an enumerated list of 16, including the public safety official as defined in 6254.24. We'd have to live with that definition right now, but perhaps under the second bill, it can be expanded next year to include that.
Could we do that as you work towards our support? And see if we couldn't expand it because of the uniqueness of animal regulation officials, although all of them are not peace officers, they're all confronted with the same issues that we've been seeing, and I don't know if that's just the city of L.A., I would assume some of these animal rights issues are basically nationwide.
I think they are. We could, on your motion, you could amend this report to not only support these bills, but to seek amendment to either one or the other. In this case, it would actually be the SB 506. To expand the definition, to expressly include all officers working in a Department of Animal Services, Animal Regulation.
And there are a subsections that include non-sworn employees of an agency, so we just have to be able to expand that.
But the issue on the 1595, that's moved too far. We would have to then seek legislation in this year for a separate expansion of that definition.
Well, I think you should be able to do it through SB 506. In other words, SB 506 would merely amend the definition that cited in 1595.
That cited in 15, okay. So if we go forward on 506 and expand that definition, they will use that as a reference on 1595.
Correct.
Okay. Colleagues, I'd like to verbally amend this committee report and ask that we support the committee's recommendations, but add the amendment that we seek to expand the definition of the categories that are listed, and to include employees of animal regulation, as opposed to just sticking with the peace officer status.
Mr. Labange.
Members, this is an international challenge in some ways with those who are hostile to those who work with animals, if my information is correct. Is that right? It's an international movement? You said a nationwide movement, Councilman Parks? It's international. I know there's issues coming forth from the Los Angeles Zoo from time to time, and I would want to stand for zoo employees to make sure that zoo employees are not missed out in this. Do you have any recommendation, Madam City Attorney?
I mean, again, you could say non-sworn employees of elected or appointed officials as designated.
Well, I just want to make sure we cover, I mean, employees of a municipality which works with animals, you know?
Well, then again, you're going to get a, you've already got opposition under First Amendment from a number of news organizations that utilize under SB 506, the voter registration, and, you know, within the city of L.A., you've got hundreds, thousands, tens of thousands of employees.
We have 47,000 employees for 4 million people right now, and I met with another wing of your department, Madam City Attorney, and there's very aggressive activity by individuals who feel strongly in what they believe in as far as the care for animals. Aggressive activity that is taking over his neighborhood, that is scaring his family, his children, et cetera. So I greatly appreciate Mr. Parks' call on this special and discussing these issues here, but I think we have to stand for those who serve the city, and there's 47,000 of us who work for the city of Los Angeles of a category down to police and fire, I don't know. I got two calls on my voicemail yesterday from somebody who was talking about things related to the zoo, and it's kind of odd, and I would just want to stand to see if we could, this is in the second bill, the first bill's already on the governor's desk, right?
Correct.
Right, so there's something that's already going through the second bill, if we could have any verbiage in there to include those who work with animals. I don't know if there's any threat on those who have the toughest job in the city, those who have to pick up animals that die and never get threatened, you know, by any one individual for that, they're in the Bureau of Sanitation. But what suggestion do you have for that? Or, Mr. Parks, do you have any suggestion on that? Repeat that, on zoos, on the zoo employees, you know, because I mean, there's a focus on some who are after those who work with animals in municipalities, not just in ours, but around the country, around the world. So will that transcend to those? There's some who believe that we should not have zoos, you know, will that one day lead to people coming on the door of zookeepers, animal technicians, caregivers, animals? I want to make sure they stand to get protected in this second bill.
I don't know if whether, and I think it gets unwieldy, whether there's some way to amend the issue of expanding the city's ability to designate employees in certain groups. I don't know whether that makes it too unwieldy. That'd be the only way that you could encompass zoo and, without saying, animal, employees that work with animals, but I mean, you'd have to have some broader designation by the city.
You could do something like non-sworn employees of elected or appointed officials as designated by a local governing city council.
By the city council, so if we pass a resolution to say care for these individuals?
Because I think we've done that in the past with designating different city employees who get their identification protected from DMV. They have to, it's just not all sworn off, but you can actually, the city has gone through that process, so it may be a similar wording.
It would allow flexibility as the occasion arises, or a designated class needs that protection, that they could be added at a future time. That's one way to approach it.
There's a unit in your office, I believe, with workplace violence, are those threats?
Yes, in terms of threat assessment, et cetera, that I can certainly talk with Vivian Swanigan as our attorney in office.
Right, and I just want to make your attention to council members to look at that aspect too, to help and possibly expand that to meet the needs there, because I don't like to see public officials attacked. And you're a public official, if you work for the city of Los Angeles in some degree, whether you're elected or appointed, or that you're civil service, because if you, especially those who live in the city of Los Angeles, members, you know, a lot of times we talk about people living in Los Angeles, there's some who do, and I'm very proud of them, as you are, and I'm sure you're very proud that they live in the city, and then you're probably more proud when they live in your district. And with that being the case there, I want to make sure that we're protecting them as best as possible. Thank you very much, Mr. President, Madam City Attorney, Mr. CLA.
Members, we have the recommendation before us, as amended by Mr. Parks. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Can I?
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 60, called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. And also, before I get into this, if we could get number three and 23 forthwith, just an add-on to the motion that we presented, Mr. Labange and I, dealing with the city's proposal for the 2016 Olympics, and certainly asked unanimous vote, which would give the U.S., the Los Angeles contingent of the Olympic Committee, a great impetus to know that the city supports it.
that the city supports it. But also, I'd ask, Mr. President, at the appropriate time, as this progresses through the system, that we would look towards having an ad hoc committee established in the city council, much as we did in the '84 Olympics, to bring together all of the wherewithal of the city government and its offices to support this effort. And so I'd ask an aye vote on number 60, but also ask the president to consider that as it moves forward.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Are the members wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That is approved. Next item.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Perry requests to be excused September 27th and 28th for city business. That meets council policy.
Ms. Perry is excused.
Councilmember Han requests to be excused Friday, September 16th to arrive at 10:45 for city business. A motion is required.
Ms. Groo moves. Ms. Han is excused.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Wednesday, October 26th for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Garcetti is excused.
Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused September 30th for personal business, also December 16th, 20th, and 21st. Those are all for personal business. And for city business, October 18th, 19th, and 21st. A motion is required for September 30th and October 19th.
Ms. Zine moves. Mr. Weiss is excused.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Colleagues, we did have a public comment card for item number eight submitted after the council considered the item or acted on the item. If we can hear from Pauline Clay.
Pauline Clay? Good morning. I'm Pauline Clay, and I'm speaking to item eight, which is the project involving the L.A. Arena Land Company. In 1990, we submitted, when I say we, New Africa Development Trust submitted to the city council, to the Community Redevelopment Agency, and to then Mayor Bradley and Lindsay, our development project. Subsequently to that time, our project was, appears to be sold to the L.A. Arena Land Company. It is my understanding that the person that was involved was Ms. Rita Walters' deputy Shepard, John Shepard. We are not opposed to the project. What we are proposed to as a community-based organization, a nonprofit organization, we incurred a tremendous amount of pre-development costs in developing the concept, which was village entertainment of New Africa in Los Angeles. The Los Angeles community, especially in the central business district, has excluded African-Americans from any in development in the city. And yet, this particular development is supposed to be entertainment and sports, which is the claim that this community is probably well-known globally, all over the world. Yet, they are excluded. But more important, we are being excluded our intellectual property rights and for the development of the concept. And we would like to be reimbursed by the L.A. Arena Land Company and for them to contact, we have tried to contact them about this development project for years. They are aware that they acquired this project in concept from our company. And we think that this would be one of the most befitting projects because of the fact that Biddy Mason was once owned all of the city of Los Angeles, all of, most of what is now Los Angeles County. And this was a slave woman. Yet, none of her people are represented in this district, in the central business district, in involvement in the same way that you have Little Tokyo, you have Overa Street, you have Koreatown, you have Chinatown, you have all these other ethnic villages. In addition, you have all the different economic districts. But here's a district that we even proposed that it should be named Sports and Entertainment. And yet, we are not being recognized. So we want to just put it on the record.
Thank you.
That we want to be recognized for our contribution and be paid for our design and our concept. And we have approved, we sent a letter of intent for development to CRA, and they responded with a memorandum of understanding, which document everything that the L.A. Arena Land Company has proposed to date.
Let me ask you to conclude, please. Thank you very much.
Did you want to ask me a question?
I wanted to ask you to conclude.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
The desk is clear, Mr. President.
Okay. Colleagues, do we have any announcements today? Announcements? Mr. Parks, do you care to explain those posters you've given out?
Yes, I just wanted to pass out some posters. Everybody would know that when USC plays MIT, oh, no, they're not on that schedule. But I just wanted everybody from UCLA to circle. December the 3rd, you may not want to be in the area. May want to protect the women and children. But that's just a poster. USC put this out. They'll be here in two weeks to honor them for the 125th anniversary of the school. But we just wanted to give you forewarning, the dates. And if you wear the proper colors, they will let you in the game. They'll let you in the game, more Cardinal in gold that day.
Mr. Reyes.
Yes. Well, we congratulate and applaud our great schools in our city. But I do want to invite all of you to a tremendous ceremony. It's a traditional ceremony in which we actually have the president of Mexico pulling, essentially alarming a bell, announcing the independence of Mexico. Simultaneously, we have the same ceremony here in the city of L.A. As you know, the city of L.A. has the second-largest population of Mexicanos here in the city. It's called El Grito. We'll have entertainment. We will have food. We'll have invited guests. And we'll have Univision, Channel 34, simulcast, televising this in a simulcast fashion. And so I invite you all to attend. It'll be a tremendous evening. And again, I invite you all to El Grito for this year. I want to thank my council colleagues for their support, they help contribute to this great event, a tradition started by Councilman Chalatory about 20 years ago. So welcome all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Colleagues, other announcements? Mr. Parks?
I just want the public to know that on Friday, September 16th, between 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., at 3800 South Crenshaw, co-hosted by the Sentinel, KJLH Radio, the 103.3 The Beat, and the Brotherhood Crusade, they'll have a live radio thon to raise money for the hurricane relief.
Thank you. And colleagues, also wanted to take the opportunity to announce, every once in a while, we'll bring about a resolution for an item that's pending in the state legislature or the federal government. And even more relevant, those occasions is weighing in on an economic issue, an economic justice issue elsewhere in the state or elsewhere in the world. Months ago, you all supported a resolution that I introduced that basically sent the message to Gallo Winery to improve their treatment of their workers, as their workers were further organizing and sought better wages, benefits, working conditions, et cetera. And I just want to call your attention to an article in the Business section of the L.A. Times today, where in fact, the union representing the workers and Gallo have reached an agreement and expect to sign a contract this week. So the city of Los Angeles did its small part in helping move economic justice issues in a very important industry in California. And we bring that item to closure here. Any other announcements? It's not, do we have adjourning motions today? If there's no adjourning motions, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardinal Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Zine.
Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.